Hey, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Daley.
I am here.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Popescu.
Here.
Mayor Potemperie-Duper.
Present.
Mayor Riggsby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We will begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Popescu. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity you've given us to serve this city, this state, and this country. We ask that you be with us this evening in this short council meeting that we may make wise decision and help the rest of us in our daily lives and the rest of our citizens so they may have productive and healthy lives. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be deleted or added?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? I have a couple of requests, and it appears that they are both un-agendized, so I will call them in the order they are presented to me. Socorro Pantaleon.
Hi, Socorro Pantaleon with Assemblymember Mark Steinorth. Tomorrow, we're having our Loma Linda office hours here at City Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that'll be my coworker Andrew, he's in charge of that. This Friday, we're having our open house in Asylman Steinorth's birthday at our new Ranch Cucamonga office from 4:30 to 6:00, sorry, from 4:00 to 6:30 p.m., so we hope to see some of you there. I have more cards with information on them as well. And then, at the end of the month, we're having our community coffee here in Loma Linda, May 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and once I get that information, I will leave them at City Hall as well as the Chamber.
Okay, our second request is from Elizabeth Lumsden from MGR Real Estate. Not here. So, is there anyone else who would like to speak on any non-agendized topics? Okay, seeing none, then we will proceed. There will be a conflict of interest issue, we'll deal with that when we get to the item. But the first item is a presentation by Mitch Alderman, my dear friend from Sandbag on the Redlands Rail Project, please.
Well, I'd love to talk, but I need a remote first. Can't talk and push buttons at the same time. Where, where?
You can do it the old-fashioned way. We'll give you a pointer.
Which button?
You use that now, go back and forth.
Okay, all right, now we know. Well, good evening. I haven't been here in some time to talk about the project. Yeah, maybe that'll help too. So what we're doing is we're making the rounds to the city councils. I've been to Redlands and San Bernardino last week, so now it's your turn to hear the status of the project. So without any further ado, I'll move on to it. There we go. Okay, the Redlands Passenger Rail Project goes from the New Transit Center that's under construction now in San Bernardino out the existing alignment out to the University of So where do we stand on the project? Well, the Sandbag Board cleared the SECA document in March. The federal government, the Federal Transit Administration cleared it the month before. So we're about to start final design this summer and construction about two years and operation in about two years after that. So you can see, we're going to be doing some outreach, and I put in a big box at the bottom that says, "Redlands Passenger Rail is a temporary name." One of your colleagues at the city of San Bernardino, Fred Charette, pointed out, hey, we don't want to be called Redlands Rail, it needs to be something more generic, so it doesn't leave San Bernardino out of it. The old alignment here in San Bernardino at the depot, you can see how it used to go out around. It was called the Redlands Loop that Santa Fe had in the 1880s. Mostly produce went around there. They actually ran eight express local trains around there for passengers a day. Well, in 1992, Sandbag bought the right-of-way from the Santa Fe as well as other rights-of-way in the other counties that made up the MetroLink system. So out of Measure I, 26 million was used to buy the entire line, not only this here, but the line that goes from here out to LA, the 26 miles that goes that way as well that makes up the LA line, or the San Bernardino line for MetroLink.
Just real quick, one quick question before we get too far and I forget. We have voting rights also, right? So who cares what Charette thinks? Why can't we just, let's just call it the Redlands Rail?
We're going to go through a branding exercise, so sure. Should we call it the Loma Linda Train? How's that?
Anything but, no San Bernardino.
We can call it, we can call it the Loma Linda Bypass since we don't have a station.
Well, we'll get to that in a minute. So here's, here's the alignment. I've traced it through Google Earth. Here, currently, we're extending MetroLink one mile into downtown San Bernardino. You may see the construction going on. That'll be completed the end of next year. And then, the light blue line is the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. The red to the right is the Orange Blossom Trail that Redlands is under construction right now. And then, the lime green is the abandoned alignment. Now, I'll make this offer to you as I've made it to everybody else. Up here in the north part, we have some remnant long skinny parcels of pieces of property. If anybody wants to buy one, we'll make a great deal for you on those. Of course, the line, 1880s and later on in the early 1900s, this is the type of equipment that used to run out to Redlands. A little more current, this was around 2000, that's the Redlands Station on the left. Of course, 1900, the station there. Now, we don't own the Redlands Station, that's owned by Krikorian. Unlike the depot in San Bernardino, Sandbag and the city of San Bernardino are half-owners of the depot there. Current operations, BNSF only comes out to about Tippecanoe, to the last customer out there. And this is what a typical Saturday train would look like, one or two cars. They don't have a lot of business out on the line. So what we did is when we adopted what's called a Local Preferred Alternative, an LPA, which says that we're basically going to reconstruct the line, build a few stations, put a passing track in, replace bridges, and use diesel multiple units for the vehicles. And we're going to reuse an existing maintenance facility here. We had looked, we cleared one down at California Street as well off of, next to Waterman over in this, over in this area here. But we want to reuse one that's currently used by MetroLink. They will be phasing that out here in the next, by the end of the year. They'll phase all those trains out, and then we're going to reuse it. And that's what it looks like over there by the 2:15. The Sandbag Office is just off the screen to the left. So basically, like I said, what we're doing is just replacing track, bridges, grade crossings. We've already advanced some of the work, Alabama and Colton crossings in Redlands. We fronted some money, the city had some money as well, so we're doing that work right now. BNSF still has the freight rights to run out the line all the way to the end, although they don't have any business out there currently. They have three customers, and the last one is just before Tippecanoe, it's a clay pigeon manufacturer. The whole line will have quiet zones, and a quiet zone, and you have trains that go through here as well. A quiet zone by the federal regulation means that the sounding of, the routine sounding of train horns are terminated. Now, the engineer can still blow his horn in an emergency, but it's a process you have to go through doing improvements to grade crossings to meet certain criteria and safety criteria. And then, only the roadway authority, which is if it's the city or county, whoever operates the railway can only enact a quiet zone, not the railroad. So a lot of cities around the country have taken those steps to just help silence those horns. Ninety percent of the complaints we get around grade crossings are usually the horn noise.
There must be a lot of emergencies then, I guess.
I don't know how many quiet zones you have in this area, too. Now, keep in mind, a quiet zone is at least half-mile long, quarter-mile each side of the grade crossing. But if you've got, if you've got a grade crossing close to the other ones that are the quiet zone, they'll be blowing their horns through that grade crossing to get to the next one, so sometimes it's better to link several of them together. This line actually has 26 grade crossings, so we have a lot of quiet zones we're going to be doing. So basically, five stations. The California Street Station, this kind of came late in the process. Loma Linda was included in initial discussions with land use with the other two cities. Since we don't go in the city of Loma Linda, there was no urgent need to participate, but just as we got to clear the environmental document last November, we get a phone call saying, hey, the VA is building a new facility at California Street, it'd be nice if there was a train station there. So we will be working with the city on that, see if there was a way to implement that. It wasn't in the budget, but perhaps we can figure out a way to work together to make that happen. Everything will be level boarded, and then we'll provide all the security at the stations. So a diesel multiple unit, this is kind of what they look like. This is actually made in Switzerland. Runs down in Texas. It's a self-propelled diesel train. If you've been down to Oceanside, Escondido, there's one called the Sprinter Project that runs kind of the same type of equipment. This gives you comparison between the two, on a DMU and a full-size freight train, which is actually the same size as a MetroLink train. So you can see the difference in the, in the size. DMUs, so what are the benefits over MetroLink? Now, when we did our JPA, not the JPA, the Local Preferred Alternative, the LPA, we said we're going to use DMUs only and not MetroLinks. We did clear in the document to run two express MetroLink trains to Redlands, but there's certain capital projects, capital improvements that have to be made to accommodate both. And we don't want to do that right now. Maybe at some time in the future, if the need is really there, then we'd move to MetroLink. So if we run DMUs, what are the advantages? Well, a MetroLink locomotive burns three gallons to the mile, not three miles to the gallons, three gallons to the mile, and a DMU gets two miles to the gallon. So they're six times more efficient in fuel, so less emissions, they're cheaper to operate because it's a one-man crew instead of two, quieter, they start and stop quicker, level boarding, so it has less impact on grade crossings. Grade crossings usually would be interrupted anywhere from 35 to 45 seconds with a DMU versus a little bit shorter freight train that goes by your grade crossings, right? Where are DMUs used? Where, where are DMUs used? I should change that, that's kind of hard to say. You can see the different locations. Texas, there's three projects. There's two already built, one starting to be underway. Northern California, BART, and you can see, but they're extensively used in Europe. Manufacturers, there are no U.S. manufacturers, and since we have federal money on this project, we have to go by, use Buy America, which means 60% of the vehicle has to be made in the U.S. Siemens build a plant up by Sacramento, but they don't build DMUs anymore, they build the trolleys, the light rail equipment. So there are some that are trying, the Chinese are trying to get into the market and some of the others. Unfortunately, the Bombardier cars, made in Canada, the white ones, you see the MetroLink cars, comply with Buy America, they build the car, they take it apart, they bring it over the border, they spend $300,000 to put it back together just to comply with Buy America. So as taxpayers, we're paying that money to do that, just to get around the Buy America. The president has been pushing to make it 100% Buy America. There's a lot of these vehicles we do not make in this country. That would, I think, drive the cost up some more. Funding for the project, you can see the breakdown. I want to stress, there's no funding from local cities. And then bonding, we've had questions about bonding. We've only bonded 26 million for the full rail project, projects at Sandbag. That includes the First Mile Project, that MetroLink extension, and this project as well. Ultimately, we'll bond for another 65 million or so, or well, up to 77 million. We will bond when we need it. No use borrowing the money now and paying debt service on something we're not ready to use. So what's included? Another question we get from the public. Well, as you can see, it's almost any project that you do, whether it's a street, a building, a park, a railroad, except startup and testing, but a lot of this is common, except vehicles with any project that even the city may do. And the downtown San Bernardino Passenger Rail Project, or the First Mile as we commonly call it, $104 million, that's totally separately funded from the 242. That's another question some of the public has been asking. Typical equipment, here's a typical MetroLink, as many of you have seen. The white cars I mentioned, these are the Canadian Bombardiers, those are the ones that they make, take apart, and put back together. The other ones are the Korean Rotem cars that they comply with the Buy America. Same type of equipment, the coaster runs up and down from Oceanside to San Diego. We looked at light rail vehicles. Light rail vehicles are typically the overhead catenary. You can see here the, the electrical line above, that's called a light rail vehicle. We examined that for this corridor, but the aesthetics with having the lines overhead is not desirable. Very common around the country. In Utah, you see it in the Gold Line on the 210 freeway. Here, you have commuter train next to a light rail train in Texas. DMUs is kind of like the early version, it's called a Bud, Bud Car made, and back in the 50s. Doesn't comply with Buy America these days or level boarding, but some entities have tried to use them as an interim. They did this in Texas between Fort Worth and Dallas. They've phased out all those cars now. DMUs, here's one in Northern California that just delivered. This is, Nippon Shario is the company that came up with these. That's one option. There's the DMU that goes between Oceanside and Escondido, the Sprinter. The Dallas-area Rapid Transit, some people talk about transit, you know, Southern California, we're not very transit-minded because we're all spread out, we never had it. But you go to a conservative area like Dallas, and you think, well, you know, they're all spread out just like we are, and they have gas and cheap gas, or cheap gas than we do. But, you know, Dallas has the largest, there's A-Train up at the top, that's a DMU project, and that's a new one at TexRail. But they are the largest light rail system in the country, and they have large amounts of transit-oriented development around the area. Their operating cost for all the rail systems around Dallas, operations, maintenance, $1.2 billion a year that they spend on transit in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. So you take a conservative area that's got urbanized like us, and they still have a pretty massive light rail and commuter rail in a DMU system. This is part of their system in Denton County, which is the A-Train that goes north out of Dallas. New one, they're going to, this one will go from Dallas-Fort Worth, or from Fort Worth up to DFW Airport. Comes in various sizes. This is from Stadler from Switzerland, the product they're buying. You can even electrify it at the end, you can see electrification pantograph there. Austin, Texas, we talked about that, they've run them in Austin. One of their stations, you can see a large parking structure on the right, and that's only for the residents of this transit-oriented development. So this is in Austin, Texas. Even Garland, Texas, a small town of 40,000 people, has a large TOD component to it. Level boarding, so there again, you can just roll in, roll out, you don't have to step up or down. Inside the cars, they're low floor, so you have more overhead, and so now you have luggage racks above. If you've been on a MetroLink train, you know how it is, if you carry on baggage, if the car is full, it sits on your lap. There's no place to put it. Here, you can put it up above, there is room in the cars themselves. And there's rooms that, you can see a bike is hanging there, so you can have ADA parked here where bikes. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
When you said there would, you'd work with us on getting the California Street exit or station, would that be funded from the operating profits from the train?
Well, that's a loaded question. Operating profits? There are no profits from a transit system.
Just wondering.
Well, you know, that's another question I, I'll tell you, I got that question from some citizens in Redlands, when is this thing going to make money? And I said, it'll never make money. The only, the only transportation system in the country that actually makes money are the freight railroads. They own their right-of-way, what they charge to haul freight pays for everything they do. Even airlines are subsidized. The FAA, the federal government, takes care of all the navigational systems, the inspections, the air traffic controllers, the local cities take care of the airports. Can you imagine if you had to roll that into a airline ticket? You'd be spending $1,500 to go up north and back, so. Some systems do better than others. BART has a fare box recovery of about 75%, pretty high. MetroLink is around 45% on the system. On the San Bernardino line for MetroLink, it's about a 60% fare box recovery. Omni-Trans on a bus, they're a little over 20%. They're about 22% fare box recovery.
How about SBX?
I won't comment. I don't know the details on that.
They're still coming along.
It'll come, when the transit center's completed and we get MetroLink there, it will help ridership on SBX.
And all of those recoveries are operating expenses, not capital investment, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so the, the actual return, if they had to borrow the money at 5% would be much lower on all of those.
Well, it's like the $83 fare or $86 fare on high-speed rail to go to LA to San Francisco.
Hey Mitch, it's good to see you.
Good seeing you.
I've seen you for a long time.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. I'm trying to ultimately get to the cost-benefit ratio on the project. What kind of, because Redlands isn't a huge community, Loma Linda's even smaller, and I'm trying to get a handle on how much we can project utilization is kind of, what it's going to look like. Have you done any projections on what kind of daily use this is going to get?
Yeah, when we do the, the environmental document, we do projections on using models that SCAG has, and opening day, it's less than 1,000 people. And of course, we're anticipating it growing from there. Because on the, on the alignment, and I didn't share this with you, that the University of Redlands, they, they can't wait for this to happen. They've, they've actually bought about 30 acres around the site, and they intend to build a big transit-oriented development. Ultimately, the university wants to build a million square feet of buildings around the transit center, not just because of the transit center. Esri, the large, you know, who Esri is, Jack Dangerman, he's paying for the New York Street stations, we're not paying for that. He's paying for the design, the construction, the maintenance, and the security on that. And then, of course, the VA stop is close by. And then, at the other end, the Loma Linda, the SAC Clinic, they wanted to build it close to the transit center on the other side. So we, those four big employers, it should have some good effect to that. And then, plus, the city of Redlands is looking at to do some land use changes to increase density, because the more density you have, the more riders that you get. Now, any project like this, yeah, sometimes you start out with a little ridership, but you have to look to the future. Not everybody's going to be driving the freeway. Not everybody drives the freeway now. And if you, one of the questions we get is, gee, not too many people in Redlands would ride this. But you have to have choices, because not everybody, 15% of the population can't fly, how do they get around? They have to use a different method. There's a lot of people that won't drive on freeways, either because they don't want to or, or don't have to. Why should their taxpayer, tax money go to pay for the freeways? See, so we have to provide choices. It's a right-of-way that we have, we can only use it for rail. We have to spend money anyway in the right-of-way to keep it open for even the freight service. We'd still have to spend tens of millions of dollars. The bridge over the Santa Ana River, it was, it was built in 1917. It's out, lived its usefulness, so there will be a capital investment regardless of this project. So why not do that, get the system up and running, and then encourage it from there?
I understand that a major incentive in this project is there's an existing rail that can be upgraded, and, and we just put a train on it. But I am curious, when you talk about what the University of Redlands is excited, I mean, they're a relatively small university, and here we have two major medical centers as well as a university. Was there any effort put into assessing what the additional cost would be of trying to get closer to these two big hospitals? Because that seems to me to be a major oversight, and I understand that there would be substantial costs involved, but I'm at least wanting to know what kind of research there was on the possibility.
We did some initial study of that through the alternative analysis, but to move the alignment over to come by the VA and the Loma Linda facilities would be very substantial.
Even if you ran it through the center of a street like some cities do?
Well, you have streetcars, and some trolleys run down the streets. The bigger equipment can't go down the street, that's the problem. So, but the cost to do that, and the, yeah, I guess you could bend it around it, but now you're running longer times, and we just didn't have the money to do that, is really what it is. Measure I, we only get 8% of the valley money. So if you take Measure I total for the county, 72% is divvied up through the valley, and of that, only 8% goes to rail. So we're, we're very limited on the funds.
And so if we look at it through budget lenses, all of that makes perfect sense. If you look at it through lenses, consumer lenses, of where would it do the most good? You've got two of the biggest organizations in the inland empire that we're not getting close to. And, and so looking at the long term, 15, 20, 50 years from now, I think that people will look back on this as a major mistake.
Let me add one thing, Councilman. Two months ago, I was at Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC, where they have been working with the city of Beaumont, where they plan to have Amtrak stop in Beaumont and maybe in Loma Linda, because the last stop that we have near Loma Linda is Palm Spring or Pomona. So they're looking at maybe a stop here in Loma Linda that's closer to, to the VA and the university. And then, they might have to go to the hub somewhere closer to Pomona that can connect to Amtrak, to MetroLink and come back, so.
And we also have SBX that goes to the same place.
Right, and it connects you back up to the trains.
Yeah.
When the train gets extended out. I, I, you know, I tell people, I can, I came from the private sector, so I'm pretty frugal with the money that we spend.
Sure.
I said, you give me enough money, I can build you anything you want. That's always the case, right?
Sure, sure.
Give me enough money, we'll build a bridge to Hawaii, but it'd be a pretty expensive bridge.
I understand that it's, it's being built for the future. I'm just curious, the 1,000 ridership that you anticipate will start the process, are those people you think will be getting, up to this point, they were getting to the same destination by other means, and now they've decided to switch? Or is it they're not even making it to San Bernardino, and now they have the trains so they can make it there? I, I'm still trying to understand, who are the riders? Are the people who are going to get on the Amtrak train to San Bernardino and go to LA? Or just going to San Bernardino?
Most of the people will be commuters.
Okay. And so, do you have data as to like what percentage from Beaumont, Redlands, Ukaypa actually come into that MetroLink station?
You mean in San Bernardino?
Yeah.
Not offhand. We know the boardings there, annual, or daily boardings in San Bernardino is around 800 to 900 on MetroLink.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you.
I had a question that's kind of similar to that, right? And I truthfully don't know, so you can shed some light on this. The morning trains, the MetroLink trains, don't most of them just go west? Is there any that come east?
Yes, there are some that come east. It's hard to come east in the morning because most of them are going west because you're swimming upstream. But we do have some trains that get into San Bernardino before 8 o'clock, because that, some of our Sandbag staff rides the train, ride the train in.
Because I, well, a big employer is ESRI, and I, I know a lot of their employees don't, don't live in Redlands, they live out further west, like Ranch Cucamonga, and I'm just curious of the possibility that they could ride in. But I know most, most MetroLink trains are hauling that way in the morning, so I wasn't certain about that.
Well, we, we will be looking at schedules, because there's some things we have to change coming into San Bernardino.
And that coordinates with MetroLink?
Right.
And the projection for opening is 2019?
19, maybe 20, depending on the vehicles. That's one of the big questions right now. Because we're not, we don't have an order of 100 vehicles, our order is maybe four, and with a few options. And we have to see what the market is at the time, and who's providing, and go through those steps. That's probably the biggest question mark in this whole thing, are the vehicles.
I'm trying to understand that question, we, we need to order at a time when they're building them, or what?
Have to wait till the next, have to wait till the next presidential.
Well, yeah, rail vehicles aren't, it's not a car lot down the street, you can just go pick up rail vehicles. They build them as you order them. So if you, and the TexRail, for example, the one that goes between Fort Worth and DFW Airport, they, when they did the procurement, they actually wanted 20, an option for 20 more vehicles, and we were told that we could be part of that option. And so, went to the Sandbag Board, and remember, we had an item that says, give me the authority to write a letter saying that we're interested in those options. Well, then we found out that TexRail didn't do the procurement right with the Federal Transit Administration, so the FTA would only give them two options instead of 20, so that's off the table. But see, they were signing the contract by now, they actually did it here last week. So then, it takes about three years to deliver the vehicles. We're going to have to procure our own now, and it'll take about a year and a half before we can sign a contract to procure vehicles. So it's going to depend on what kind of vehicles are being made and who can give the best deal. So that's why we don't know who the manufacturers are at this point.
But meanwhile, we can do those.
Exactly, the hand cars.
Yeah.
Good exercise.
Is it, is it uphill? Is it, is it uphill, or is it fairly flat?
Well, it goes downhill, low spots around the San Ana River, and then it goes back up.
Okay, so, it'll be some exercise.
Exercise, coast down and go back up.
It's an exciting project. I look forward to seeing it all involved. However, I still stand by what I said in terms of, I, it just makes no sense to me that there wouldn't have been some significant effort to find a way to include such major institutions. It just makes no sense to me.
It, it just takes money. The Sprinter project actually made a bypass to go over to Cal State San Marcos. First, it was in, then it was out, but it did cost a hundred and fifty million to get the swing over to pick up that.
Dr. Daley, just issue me a note that we actually had this discussion four years ago, and Dr. Brower made a big deal about the fact that it should come through Loma Linda.
Oh, I know we've discussed it, but I don't see any evidence that it made any difference, so.
No, they, they beat to their own drum over there.
Well, my feeling is.
Although this project was much cheaper, I think, than the SBX bus.
It cost three hundred and forty-six million dollars to go from Redlands to downtown San Bernardino. So, you can imagine what it wa, and that's on a pre-existing right-of-way.
No, I understand.
You know, just imagine.
I understand. I'm looking thirty, forty, fifty years down.
Yeah, but a billion dollars later, yeah.
Well, I think we're still driving cars.
You're still paying the interest on that money.
We only need trains.
Yeah, it would be, I, I think the, the, the bridge to nowhere would be nothing compared to the disdain that would be piled on us by the national press if we had a billion-dollar train just to loop through Loma Linda, when we've already got a hundred and ninety-two million-dollar bus. So, that's my take on it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Come anytime.
I will.
Okay, item number two is a proclamation. Uh, there's no one here to receive it. I will give a very brief synopsis of the proclamation. But as to the Community Action Partnership of San Bernardino County, that's fifty years old this year, so going back to nineteen sixty-five. That was a good year to turn three. I can attest to that. And the whereases are, whereas what was established in nineteen sixty-five as the Dependency Prevention Commission has transitioned from a public entity to a private not-for-profit known as Community Action Partnership of San Bernardino County, and whereas they have fifty years of diligently fighting against poverty in the county, and they're designated as, as an official agency for the county, and they continue to meet ever increasing demands and challenges by creating versatile programs such, such as energy and environmental services, home energy assistance programs, and weatherization services. And whereas they embody the spirit of hope and change people's lives, improve communities, and make America a better place, I congratulate them on the, on the occasion of their fiftieth anniversary of exemplary service. And this will be sent to them for, for their use. The next item, item three is a public hearing, precise plan of design. This has the necessity of a rule.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, as, as you recall, on these matters involving the university or the medical center, four of the council members have declared a conflict of interest due to income or employment with the university or medical center. So, I have the four straws prepared, two of which will indicate that you will participate if you are lucky enough to draw the straw.
So, Mayor Protem, take it away.
Mr. Bolovich?
All right, this is a, before we start, this is really an anomaly for you guys to see. Our zoning code requires that all new construction, all new buildings in the commercial and institutional zone go to Planning Commission. Planning Commission is conflicted. Therefore, it comes to you. This really is a very small storage facility and a couple of carports associated with it, uh, right behind the Grayson Center. So, subject site, Grayson Center on Stewart Street. Um, it is conforming with zoning, general plan, existing uses part of the campus and the Grayson Center, bounded by the railroad property, and then beyond that is zoned for multifamily, uh, high-density, um, property to the north, to the south, and east and west is all institutional. Um, we're looking to build a fifteen-hundred square foot storage building, just to, basically to hold stuff for the Grayson Center and replace some landscape area that will be taken up with that, and then to put in, um, two sections of four, uh, carport-type facilities to park their vehicles and the utility carts, that type of stuff, and then solar panels on the carports. So, that's what it looks like right now. There's the storage building, kind of tucked back in there. There's the two carports. We'll go back. Right now, this is landscaping here and here, and just kind of a dirt area over here behind the tennis courts. Oops. So, building, carports. Um, kind of broken-down site plan. Uh, it's, it's a storage building. Um, same thing, carports each side, and then just some elevations. It really is just a couple doors, some vents, and a concrete, uh, veneered wall to match the existing structures around there. Um, it meets all the setbacks, three hundred and thirty feet from the front yard. Um, side yards are a hundred and thirteen and twelve hundred feet. Rear yard is about forty feet. Building coverage is less than ten percent of the lot, and it's relatively unobtrusive at, at fourteen and a half feet for the tallest building. So, it complies with the development standards for institutional zone, matches some of the colors and the architectural elements of the Grayson Center, and it is categorically exempt from SICA requirements. And that is the end of the presentation. Questions?
Outside of it being the Grayson Center and not the Grayson Center?
Did we? Oh, yeah, yeah.
What I thought was interesting is I, it doesn't have anything to do with anything, but I thought it was interesting that in the staff report, it talks about, or in the, in the agenda item, it talks about for ATVs.
Yeah, apparently, they have those little Cushman's or the, the Gator-type vehicles to do part of the landscaping and haul stuff out to the fields when they do events out on the field. They want to keep those undercover.
Okay, I would've just said, oh, for a carport, but, all right.
Has a local community group been identified, or is that just a case somebody wants to use it type thing?
Uh, the storage?
Well, it says to be used by Grayson Center and a local community group.
I think it's the Lopers. They have stuff stashed away inside the building, and they, they want to get all their stuff into one place. Is that right, Ken? Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open the public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak or address this item, please step forward. And seeing no rapid response, to run towards the podium, I will close the public comment section and entertain a motion as to approval. I move the items.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Uh, I'll make it short and sweet. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Propeska, oh.
And then it is.
Sluggishly unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
I had a question on item number seven.
Okay, let's discuss item seven then. Public works. This is approving seventy thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the park fund to install a playground in Elmer Dignio Park, where I presume there will be no grass soon.
No, we have existing playground equipment at the Elmer Dignio Park. That's, uh, that's meet the American with Disability Act, or ADA, compliant. And what happened is, is earlier this year, the park had been inspected by the California JPAA and recommended we replace that playground equipment. So, we, we went out, get two bit, and, and what we did is we gave them the cost baseline, and they came up with two different design, and it took that two design to the park and the certification committee, where they select, select the, the design from a miracle. So, staff recommended we award a contract to them.
Just curious as to, after expending these funds, what would be the balance in the park fund?
We, we just have money in there. I don't have the number with me. I plan to spend it in the, probably two hundred thousand dollars in the park fund.
We, we briefly talked about this before, where, we talked about the equipment. They're getting pretty old and, uh, in need of repair and replacement. That's, that's kind of one of those needed things we'd already talked about, correct?
Yeah. Well, I guess my only concern was that it's a significant expenditure for just one playground versus even how much money we have left in the park fund for other parks as well, like soccer fields and.
Yes.
Baseball fields and all that, so that's, I, I think you mentioned that if we redid the soccer field over by Bren Mar, that would cost approximately?
I don't have the number with me right now, so.
So, after expending this, we'll have about two hundred thousand dollars in the park fund?
Yes.
Okay.
It belonged to university.
That's what I thought. So, um, we don't know what the long-term future plans of that are. I mean, I've sat in meetings on the university where there's been all kinds of talk about stuff.
I did check with the, uh, White President of Construction, Ken.
Didn't mean to wake you up, Ken.
That, that did not plan to do anything with that area soon, anytime soon, so.
Okay.
So, the new. Dignio, Dignio Park. Ken, Dignio Park, no plans to turn it into an office complex or anything?
Or a Dell school. They need to find a dean that can raise the money.
We've looked at a utility station there to support campus transformation, but for the moment, we've found another option. So, the only development that's ever been seriously planned there was the new dental school. So, thinking it's ten years out more, yeah, that's where we're at.
Okay. And with all of the other issues like needing to redo landscape and so forth, pull weeds and all of that, we've, we've got an extra seventy thousand dollars laying around?
We, no, we cannot use this funding for, for maintenance. We can only use, this is from park development impact fee, so you can put in new.
Okay, so the source of the money determines what we can use it for.
Correct. We can use, we can only use general fund for, for maintenance.
And I'm, I'm also trying to get my head around, uh, playground equipment and American Disability, with Disabilities Act.
Yes, sir. Is, is that, that all the playground equipment had to be accessible for the, uh, uh, kid on the wheelchairs? So.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with it. I, I just, I didn't understand it. Still don't, but I'll take your word for it. You want me to move on to eight manual questions?
Yes, yeah. Number eight, what's your question?
I started looking at the packets. Uh, what, what's, and this, we're only kind of getting it on the agenda for future consideration. Is that correct?
No. Well, this, every year, we will, I will present this, this, uh, the assessment for the, the Landscape Assessment District and the Streetlight Assessment District. And, and this meeting is, is a, uh, information that the public can review, so that at the next city council meeting, the, the public can have a public hearing and approve the assessment.
Okay. Uh, okay, I understand. So, I've got a couple of weeks to go through the packet then to understand.
Yes, and I'd be happy to go with you anytime. It's, it's the same thing pretty much every year. For example, the Landscape Assessment District, we have a total of seventy-two assessment, of which the first fifty are, have no cost escalation. Pretty much, the homeowner paid the same amount, even though the cost of maintaining is having been going up. Uh, a lot of them, we have the assessment that maintain, self-maintain, so, so that not included in, in this.
City Ranch Cucamonga is going to this right now, where they're trying to go to a, what's, what is it called?
Self-maintained.
Self-maintained district?
Right.
And, um, there's a lot of argument for it, because it, it kind of makes it a fair share for everyone.
What does that mean?
That's, that's meaning instead of have the city contractors maintain it.
Yeah.
That, for example, the homeowner can, can maintain it. Uh, Oakwood apartment up on Oakwood, if you look at the landscape on Oakwood in the corner of Oakwood and Barton Road, they have a nice landscaping. They maintain it themselves. So, that's what it mean.
And so, we can, we can, you'll update us in the next city council meeting about the transition of streetlights.
Oh, the streetlights, same thing. The Streetlight Assessment District is, is the same thing that, that, uh, the property owner have to pay part of assessment.
Yeah, I'm talking about the conversion, though, to the lower-energy use.
LED.
LED.
We have, we have been replaced at along Mount, at Barton Road and Mountain View, so we need more money, the grant money, really, to replace more.
Okay.
More LED lights. And if we have the light bulb that out, go out, we usually replace it with LED light. Keep in mind that not all of the streetlight are, belong to the city. Some belong to Edison. We have Edison representative here. And so, we only deal with the, the one that belong to the city.
Can ours go out? Can we switch them out for the Edison ones?
They wouldn't let us.
I'm done.
I think we can buy our wires on the secondary market.
Again, we deal with that, too. A lot of people stealing the wires.
Lot of copper theft. Okay, there was a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Uh, old business, new business, nothing. Reports of councilmen? Reports of officers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one. Uh, as you're aware, on the news, on the TV news and newsletter, and newspaper, that last week, the state water board did approve the water conservation. And for the city of Loma Linda, we have to reduce the water consumption by thirty-six percent. So, and by, we have to do that by, by June first, which is in the next couple of weeks. Only thing we did so far is, is we come up with a sign that you will see at all the city park. We already put it up. And, uh, and the front of city hall here that say the city of Loma Linda is doing our part conserving water. These past two months, the city has been reducing the, the irrigation timing for all the city parks, city parkway, by fifty percent. Uh, as you can see, the, the grass that are turning brown. Luckily, the past couple of week, like, like last weekend, we have rain, and we're supposed to have a little rain tomorrow, I mean, Thursday and Friday, but eventually, it's gonna turn brown. And, and so, just wanted to let you know. Next, we plan to have another sign, uh, for the resident that they can put in front of their front yard that say, uh, we are doing our part conserving water. And last night, at the park and verification committee, they recommend that we put in red, are you doing your part? So, I think it was a great idea. So, we plan to do that. And the homeowner can, we can give it to homeowner for free and put it in their front yard. For example, my front yard, oh, it's not turning brown.
Can you superimpose a picture of Jerry with his finger?
I think, I think the sign should say, should say, you voted for brown, there's your lawn. There's your lawn.
And, and another thing that we're doing, a plan to do, is put some door hanger. Uh, we received a complaint from the neighbors, or somebody complained that the neighbor have the. have, uh, overwatered, uh, their lawn. We'll, our staff will go out, do investigation, and put some little door hanging, uh, under, under, under-
And just so, just so the public is, is real clear, we sit on our own reservoir, we pump from our own reservoir, and although our experts have told us our reservoir has dropped, we have our own water. We are still required by law, by the state, and by the governor, to reduce thirty-six percent of our own water usage.
Yes.
Well, it's not exactly our own reservoir. There are about two hundred straws in the cup, so. But, yes.
So, so I want to let you know, uh, our neighbor city, for example, city of Highland, they in the process increasing the water rate by as much as sixty percent. Uh, so it'll be interesting to see. Uh, our captain's out here, he live in East Highland, so he always complain to me, a couple hours staff complained that they're going to see their water bill increase by sixty percent. Our neighbors to the east, city of Redlands, they already hired more staff to do more enforcement. Uh, I, I don't want to go that far yet, but eventually we might have to, to look into it. That's my report. So, conserve water.
Can we, uh, are we going to eventually have an agenda item where we discuss our options?
Yes, we talk about, I talked to Diane this afternoon, where I'm thinking of hiring that, that gentleman who did our rate study to see what's the impact on our water operation if we reduce the water consumption by thirty-six percent. Yes, our costs will reduce a little bit due to, we don't have to pump as much, which is reduce our electricity costs, but our overheads still the same for paying the personnel, the treatment facility, the testing of water, so we just have that cost. And looking at, instead of do the tier rate that we have, we might have to do something a little different. So I'm looking into that.
Well, didn't the tiered structure fail at, at court challenge?
Yes.
Yes, the, the water rates have to be based on the, the cost of providing the service, so we can't charge more than that.
So how's Highland, so how's Highland doing that, then?
They increase theirs by sixty percent.
Not paying attention to the court ruling?
No, they, they did have study, but I don't know how they did the study, but.
They may have based that upon the presumed lower usage, then they have to spread the capital and other costs over a smaller volume, so the price per volume goes up.
What happens after a sign, set period of time and that usage hasn't gone down and that-
Then they should drop.
Then they should drop the cost. I mean, that's, that's borderline playing with-
Well, they'll need, they'll need the extra sixty percent to pay all the city fines. Ten thousand dollars a day. Okay, so that's it for reports of officers. Then I believe the city council is adjourned. We will move to our other agendas. Let's start with the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Hearing none. The consent calendar. Now would be the time to move it. Okay, is there any discussion? Any, uh, those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. That is approved. We have new business, item number three, Loma Linda Housing Authority Bill Number R dash two thousand fifteen dash zero three, approving the homebuyer loan agreement for the sale of a property.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, as you may recall, uh, due to the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, we are now proposing that the homes, instead of being purchased by the housing authority outright, as we used to do when we were redevelopment agency, that the homes that are for sale actually transfer from the seller directly to the buyer, with the only, um, housing authority action being that we would finance, um, the new buyer, since outside financing is, um, difficult, if not impossible, to obtain. In this case, we do have the buyer, um, the seller, the brois on Van Moven Street, we have a buyer, um, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Moran, um, willing to purchase the property. We are currently financing the seller, and so would therefore finance the buyer. Um, the housing authority would disperse to the seller a total of under twenty thousand dollars as their, um, share, and then the buyer would also provide, uh, minimum down payment assistance. Outside financing cannot be, cannot be gotten. So we would ask that you authorize the, um, the homebuyer loan agreement, which approves the process which has been previously approved by the board, and then authorize the appropriation of the nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven, uh, dollars from the fund balance to the, um, housing authority account.
What are the financing terms?
I don't have the loan agreement with me, but the, um, the sales price is basically one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I'm doing this from memory now. The homebuyer will provide the minimum down payment, which is one thousand dollars. There is a first deed of trust in the amount of one thousand dollars, which is, which preserves the covenant, which runs for the forty-five-year term. And so the housing authority would be financing one hundred and sixty-three thousand, and the interest rate, I believe, is six percent.
And the reason we're doing this is because the, the prospective buyers can't qualify for a commercial home loan?
They qualify for commercial loans. The lenders are not lending. Um, we had a situation fairly recently wherein we had a buyer who, um, through a divorce settlement, had approximately forty thousand dollars to put down on a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home, and it was refused. They are not lending because of the covenant, the affordability covenant.
The covenant is superior to their position, and they're not willing to, to take the risk.
And, uh, we've done this before. How many, how many of these, uh, carrying the paper on the homes, uh, how many times have we done that?
I believe we have forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, how's it working out?
It's working out very well. Um, you know, the, the buyers, um, when we finance, understand there can be no further debt on the home, so there can be no lines of credit, that type of thing. So that maintains the affordability, uh, should there be an instance for resale. Um, sometimes when we've had outside financing, we have in the beginning. Wells Fargo financed in the beginning, um, city mortgage financed in the beginning. They are no longer doing that. But we did find that those lenders, um, sometimes violated the agreements, allowed lines of credit, so that the homes were no longer affordable for a new buyer. So this does restrict the buyer, but according to the, the rules and regulations.
And do we have to expend very much in terms of city resources to collect these monthly payments?
No. I do, we have an internal program, um, which I'll handle.
Okay, thank you.
Is the homeowner's insurance carried by us or by the, by the borrower, and how do we assure that they're still insured?
The homeowner's insurance is, is, um, is paid for by the buyer. We set up an impound account for them, so they pay into that monthly. So when the renewal of the insurance, and of course, when property taxes become due, there is money in their account to pay it.
Okay.
I will move LLHA Bill R dash two zero one five dash zero three.
Okay, is there any discussion? Uh, this doesn't require a public hearing, so, um, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Next is, well, are there any reports from members or officers? Okay, then that's adjourned. The next is the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Uh, the cons, are there, would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Okay, the consent calendar is there.
I move.
A second though.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, just curiosity, is there any update on the legislation Sacramento that's affecting us?
No update, yes, yet. We are waiting for the governor's budget to come out on Thursday to hear any updates as far as, um, the effect on the city loans, and then we still have the litigation that will be pending.
Okay. Do we know whether any of the testimony that the cities provided changed the legislation in our favor in any way?
Until we hear Thursday, what's actually coming down.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. That passes. Uh, there's no new or old business. We're adjourned, and that would be it for the evening.